Hey, what's up, Hilo News family? This show is brought to you by Baptist Health's Pine App. Healthcare at your fingertips with the Pine App. Head to HiloNewsMiami.com right now to learn more about their app and all of the new features created to improve your healthcare experience with Baptist Health. Thank you for tuning in. Hey, what's up, Hilo News family? Welcome to another episode of Can We Talk? The show where we talk to people doing dope things in the community. And it's election season, so we're talking to candidates. So you can hear from them first why they deserve your vote. And today I have a very special guest on today. I would really love for you guys to learn more about their story and learn why you should vote for them. Without further ado, I want to welcome to the show William D.C. Clark.
Hello, Ms. Tate. How you doing? It's a pleasure to be here.
Oh, thank you so much. I know it was crunch time. I know you're in the middle of campaigning. So I really, really appreciate you taking the time to speak with me, especially, you know, supporting local journalism and supporting local independent black owned media. Like, that shows you a lot about your character, who you are, and what you're about.
Well, you're one of my favorite news people. As a matter of fact, I told you a while back that I see great things happening to your career. Once I win this election, I want you to be a part of a team of millennials that will instruct us on how to further include millennials in this county government and how to include millennials of color in this great county of ours. Unfortunately, too many of you are departing and going to other ports of call simply because the opportunities are not here. And I'm trying to change that paradigm. I'm trying to change that dynamic because we need you and people like you to help us get to where we need to be.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. That means a lot coming from you guys. This is an icon in the community.
I believe that's one of my major complaints. Because for too long, people between 20 and 40 have been discarded in this county. And I believe your talent, your extraordinary talents should be put to greater use here in this county and will take us to greater heights. And I believe that very strongly.
Thank you. And you know what? You know, we could just jump right into the interview. You already kicked it off because that's the things that I want to know. So tell me, you have a career of public service. But tell me, what was it that was a moment for you where you said, you know what? I want to run for office because you've been doing things in the community, guys. This is, he's not new to this. He's true to this.
Well, I'm gonna answer your question after I share this with the listening public. I'm a lifelong resident here in Miami-Dade County. I'm vying to become your commissioner because of my combined level of expertise or talents, as I would say. I was a teacher in Dade County for a number of years, coach. I was a drug rehabilitation counselor. I was a aircraft servicer at Eastern Airlines.
Oh, wow.
I was a 28-year veteran for the fire department, Miami-Dade Fire Department, as a firefighter and paramedic. My wife and I own a bookstore, Afro in Books and Things, in the city for 13 years. I'm the president of I Care, which is Inner City Alumni for Responsible Education, a group that elevates poor-performing schools, inner-city schools, so that they can be on par with all other schools. I was the first ever alumni president at a local high school, saving that high school from being closed, district managed, or turned into a charter school.
And what school was that?
That is Miami Central. Miami Central was ranked the worst school in the state of Florida along with Edison a few years back around 2005. And because of that, I was called to duty to help save the school. And we accomplished that. And I'm proud to say that Miami Central is now standing on very firm ground and is no longer in danger of becoming an elf school. I'm currently the president of DCS Mentoring Program, which mentors young men between the ages of seven and 17 years old so that they can become productive individuals in the greater community. So I believe those combined talents and the mere fact that people call me anyway to solve their problem. Yeah, I'm sorry. But I think that becoming commissioner, I will have greater resources to do the things that I'm already doing. So I was called to duty when Commissioner Monistain decided to run for mayor, which he didn't do. And so people tried to list me into becoming the next commissioner. And now that his term is over, I am in the race. We're running a very strong race, and we feel good about our chances.
That's good to hear. And you know, people don't understand that you've been out here. You know, tell me a little bit about some of those historic moments. I know there's this iconic photo of you standing up to the police. I'm like, you've had the bookstore, you've been doing stuff in the community. I met you when you were really heavy with I Care, which is amazing organization for inner-city schools. And so tell me some of those highlights of people like, so people know your history. They know that resume. Like, what are some iconic things or some highlights that you would like to share with the audience that you have done over the years?
Well, a couple of things. I walked with Reverend John Juice from the Haitian community to help them gain their rights here in the United States. Problem is, I walked while I was a firefighter for Miami-Dade County. It wasn't a problem to me. It was a problem to the authorities who felt that you, as a black man, have a good job. Why would you jeopardize it trying to help other people? Well, as far as I'm concerned, it wasn't a crime to help my brothers from Haiti. I wasn't breaking any laws. I think I am an avid reader, particularly of African history. I knew that even though we come from different ports of call, him from Haiti, and we're from the United States, that we would not be separated in this instance. I know that the greater community was confused when Haitians started coming over here. The government.
What year around was this time? Like a?
This was late 80s, early 90s. And we, as I am Miami, which I forgot to explain in my introduction, the international African movement it stands for was just a group of black men here in the States reading about their history, heritage, and culture. We would hold events like at Wind Cherry Park and Malcolm X Festival, if you will, LaMarcus Gobby Festival. We had thousands in the park, educating them about their history, heritage, and culture. And so it was a group of professionals, which was rare during this time. And we decided, listen, those brothers and sisters need our support, and we're going to give it to them. And I spent more time on 79th Street in front of the Immigration Building or more time on 54th Street where we had several meetings with Haitian leaders than I did in my own community at some point. So we were called into headquarters, the fire department headquarters, and asked why we're doing it. And eventually told them, we were not breaking any laws. We think it's very admirable for us to assist our brothers and sisters. And we will continue to do it as long as God give us life. And all they could say is, don't break any laws because we're after you. I said, well, thanks for the warning. Another such instance is, we were out on the street passing out flyers about police brutality. This was probably in 1985. And we went to Launchmark Gardens where we rested up after the long walk. And a young man came riding on his bicycle and said, another brother just got shot by a cop at the Food Giant. And that's what that picture you're talking about came about. When we got there, we were about 10, 20 strong waving a liberation flag, red, green, and black. And when we got there, the police tried to usher us off of the tarmac, off of the parking lot. And we told them, after noticing that maybe 200 Haitian Americans were across the street, since they were ushered off the parking lot previously, that we weren't going anywhere. And they started to arrest us. And then we told them, you can arrest us because we're within our rights. We let them know there's only three ways that you can tell us to leave. One, the owner could tell us. And since he wasn't here, that option was gone. Two, the owner have to have written on his establishment that he gives you the right to remove us, since that didn't happen. That's option number two that was gone. And three, the owner have to give you written permission. You have to have written permission in your hands and show us that the owner gave you this permission. Since you have neither of those three entities, then we're staying. And their chief said, these guys are absolutely correct. After that, the 200, 300 Haitians came back on the tarmac, and it was on after that. They ran our tags. They saw that we were firefighters for the most part. Called our superiors from the fire department, they came. And we abruptly told them that this is not their fight. Again, we're not breaking any laws. And you can't tell us what to do on our time off. This is our time. This is our free time. You cannot dictate to us what we are doing, particularly if these are lawful activities and we're not breaking any rules. Again, we were called in and they told us that we were in our rights. That situation evolved around a young brother getting shot. Haitian brother getting shot over a line. He went into the store, grabbed what he thought was 10 lines. When he got outside the store, he recounted the lines, discovered that there were only nine lines, and went to just get one more line. I don't see any problem with that. Normally, a store would say, okay, go and get another line and you're good. Well, he got into a confrontation with the store security officer. And the security officer wound up shooting him in the back. So it went along with us passing out those flyers on police brutality. And one and one became 39. It got blown out of proportion. It was a big thing, number one on the news cycle for a couple of days. These are the type of things that we don't necessarily enjoy getting involved in. But when you're trying to protect your people and fight for your people, oftentimes you find yourself in situations like that.
Man, that story is amazing. Every time I hear about it, I just get, you know, chills. And I'm like, man, like the fight, like you've really been out here working. You're really like a civil rights or human rights icon in Miami. Tell me why it's been important for you to fight? You know, I know you fight for all people regardless of race, gender, you know, sexual orientation. But I know you have a specific love for black people from all over the world. If they're in South Florida, you're fighting for them. Why is that important to you?
Well, I came up through a home where my parents were servants. And to us, that wasn't a bad word. Servants to us denotes helping your people out wherever they are and whenever you can. So my father was a school teacher. My mom worked at Bell Harbor Shops, but she was the greatest cook. And so I was born in Overtown, historic Overtown. I lived for 10 years in Scott Projects. So I know firsthand, even though my parents were professional, all of my friends were living on welfare. All of my friends and families and their families were fighting just to survive. So that became a part of me. And so somewhere I heard that serving your own is the greatest thing that you can ever do. And I internalized that. When I heard it, it became a part of my mantra. And so from that point on, I used to watch my mom have rent parties for struggling people, people struggling to pay their rent. And since she was such a great cook, we're of Bahamian descent. So fried fish, conch fritters, conch salad, stew conch. That's what I grew up eating daily. And so she would use those same skills to have parties to help neighbors pay their rent. And to me, I viewed that as very admirable. And it just became a part of my DNA. And so right now on my plate, I have two evictions and a couple of elderly people trying to get, you know, affordable housing. But that's the stuff that I do. You know what I mean? I don't pat myself on the back because somebody got to do it. So my contacts with the county government comes in handy. I kind of refer some of these things to people that I know that's already in the county government. Or I just try to take it on and do it myself. I want to become commissioner simply because it gives you a greater capacity to serve. Unfortunately, the commission is set up where only aristocrats can become commissioners. $6,000 a year. People like you, me, Valencia Gundas, people like us can't afford to become commissioners. Fortunately for me, I have a firefighter pension. I'm old enough to draw social security. We've done, my wife also has a pension from being a police captain with Dade County Public School Board. And we live simple. I'm still on 126th Street in North Miami. I haven't moved, even though we can afford to, west of I-75. That's not me. That's not who I am. I do not frown on people who do. But I'm a people's person, and I want to be amongst the people. It's vibrant. It gives me energy. It keeps me in touch with the Janet Tapes and the Valencia Gundas and the Jane Mungins. It keeps me in touch with my people. So that's why I want to become commissioner, because it gives me greater capacity to serve.
I love that. And I love how you broke that down. And I want to ask you, you know, you spoke on it a little bit. But what are some of the issues or the main components of your platform? And what you hope to work on or accomplish when you are elected to county commissioner?
Well, here in North Miami, it's no different than any other. District 2 is the poorest district in the entire county. So when you're poor, you try to make things happen. And unfortunately, you try to make things, some try to make things happen in an untoward way, which means violence, gun violence is very high. I was sleeping about a month ago and around an automatic weapon just fired out. I thought it was literally shooting inside my window, and it made me hit the floor. It was so close. So on the floor, I had to laugh because I'm in this political arena. And people often ask, what is your top priority? So here I am on the floor from a loud round of gun violence, gunfire. And of course, it suddenly became crystal clear to me that safety is the number one issue. So, and you know, I know other very important problems like affordable housing, infrastructure, the elderly, and like I said, dealing with millennials are also very important. But without safety, none of that, you know, will function correctly if you're afraid to go from point A to point B every time you leave your house. So we have to tackle safety. We have to deal with the police. I view police in a positive sense. But I will tackle those individuals who do not come to the job with the correct reference. The police department is just like any other department. It's a microcosm of the greater community. And in the greater community, you have good, you have bad, you have indifference. So I'm going to praise the good. I'm going to deal head-on with the bad. Because police want young people, particularly African-Americans, to snitch on people who did wrong in the community. And I agree, I want them to tell the truth too. But if you want us to come clean, you have to come clean about the individuals among your ranks that do not mean the people any good. So if we're going to clean up the community, we also have to clean up the police department as well. So I think I'm that guy that will fight this thing head-on so we can have a more healthy relationship with the police. We'll have a more healthy police department. And we'll have a healthy arrangement between the police and the community. And maybe we could improve relationships overall between both.
And what area does District 2 cover? For people who may not know, can you explain like what areas or what cities are a part of it?
Yes, I can. North Miami Beach, it starts north on North Miami Beach, North Miami. It goes east to nearly Biscayne Boulevard. It comes west of I-95 all the way to 37th Avenue on 135th Street side. And then it meanders all the way down to 18th Street on that side, on that corridor, 37th Avenue corridor, if you can believe that. So it's very expansive. Again, the poorest district around. And we hope that people get out and vote. All right, we got someone sad. Are we able to pause this anytime?
Um, I know that.
No, no, no. I just had someone sad. Now, we're good.
Okay. Yeah, we can keep, we can keep rolling.
Okay, so basically, we have a very expansive district. We also have a situation where a few more areas were picked up due to redistricting. And so there are other areas of concern. And the area codes involved are 33168, 33167, 33161, 33150, and 33147. And so those are the zip codes that we're dealing with as we speak. We picked up corners of a few other zip codes. And then we'll, and then, you know, so people have to check their ballots to make sure that we're not included, all right?
All right, got it. And I'll give you some, give you some time to get back, you know, settle.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm in the middle of paying poll workers and things of that nature. So please forgive me. Go ahead.
It's all good. I know you like in the thick of things. So it's stuff constantly moving around you.
Right, okay, go ahead.
I wanted to know, can you explain to our audience? Because a lot of times, especially our millennial audience, they don't understand what the role is of certain elected positions. Can you break down what the role of a county commissioner is? What that job includes?
Well, for me, I can't state what it is for anybody else. But the number one job is to improve the overall conditions of the district, to make it safer, to bring jobs, to improve infrastructure. But I want to add to that, to me, the number one job is to serve the interests of the people. Unfortunately, in most districts, the people are last on the total poll. Big developers are number one. The reason why the rent is so high is because big developers are not talking about rent controls. When they build a structure or an apartment building or single-family homes, they want top dollar for those homes or apartments. So they're the last ones to talk about rent control. And there actually a rule about a county or municipality not being able to put rent control on builders and developers. But there's an addendum to that. It also says, the only way that you can place rent control on anyone or any building is that it's an extreme emergency. Well, aren't we in an extreme emergency right now?
Yes, we are.
Most people are being priced out of, most people are being priced out of their homes, priced out of their apartments. You know, they can raise rent upwards to $1,000 more a month. And there's nothing the renter can do about it. The person who's raising the rent got to give the renter maybe a month or two notice. But what's that in the face of trying to come up with an extra $300, $400, $800,000 to pay your rent that you've been paying a certain amount for the past four or five years? So the job of the commissioner is to make their district healthier. And it includes all of those things that we talked about, particularly bringing in jobs. And so I have an initiative that I want to embark on this district. I want to bring the police, the school district, and major businesses like the Air and Seaport. You also have an Amazon hub here as well. And I want to make them and more create internships or jobs available if we create a situation where those with criminal activities or looking to improve their overall life and get good-paying jobs to enroll in trade and logistic hubs. You have one at Miami Central. You have one at Dorsey. You have one at Miami Northwestern. I want to create maybe at least three or four more in my district and maybe 50 more in the county so that individuals who have not found their way, who are embarked in criminal activities, could go and learn a skill. could go and learn a skill. And once they learn that skill, be awarded an industry certified, uh, in, uh, industry, industry certification, I'm sorry. So that that industry certification means that you're prepared to go on any one of those job sites and be given a nice job to take care of your families, to pay your high rent. Because most of these jobs, I mean, people frown upon it. But a forklifter may make fifty thousand dollars a year to start off with. The elevator, uh, elevator mechanic may make eighty thousand dollars a year. And people don't understand that. You don't have to go to college. Even though I, I want you to reach your educational zenith and go to college if that's for you. For those who are unfortunate enough to go to college, you have a way out. You don't have to go robbing and stealing and beating people across the head, selling drugs or whatever it is. Now, if that's what you want to do, then I can't help you. I'm trying to help. And, and one of the things that I want to do for those who's, who's situated in that ilk, I'm sorry, I said that I can't help you. But I will try to help you. There's a model that Dr. Armon Henderson, you know him very well.
Yeah, Dr. Henderson.
That, that, that has, that came from Newark, New Jersey. And he basically states that anybody who finds themselves on the brink of destruction, well, there's killing yourself or killing someone else. We have a way to avert that. Create what they call safe houses. Where trained social workers can intercede and intervene and talk to you about getting you what you need to become whole. Instead of doing something untoward, instead of doing something in a very drastic manner, we have people waiting for you to help you through the night and perhaps through the month and through the year so that you can become whole. It has lowered crime in Newark, New Jersey. Dr. Henderson and staff is, has brought it to Miami. And I want to incorporate that vision, that type of help, not only into our district, but the county at large. So what we're trying to in, in nature. And so, uh, these are some of the things that I want to include when I become a commissioner district two.
And that's an amazing plan. And, and I like that, that vision that you have for the district. To switch gears just a little bit, I know that the campaign can get really tough. You know, mental health is, is a, is an important hot button issue right now. And I know one way to, you know, improve your mental health is to listen to music. So I want to know what's on your playlist right now? What's helping you get through these last, you know, this last, uh, port, part of the election, the campaign? And I know that takes a lot of energy. What are you listening to to keep you motivated, to keep you going?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm very versatile when it comes to music. I would live, listen to everything from jazz to Silk Sonic. You understand me? I'm a Marvin Gaye fan. So I always have that in my playlist. But I try to keep up with the young folks too. I'm not the little baby and the baby yet. But, uh, I do listen to, to keep in touch. So I, when I have these conversations with my daughter or my grandchildren, uh, I'm current and know a little bit about everything. So I have a healthy playlist. Uh, so, and which I'm very proud of.
That's, I love it. I love Silk Sonic. I love Marvin Gaye too. So I, I, I like your playlist. Um, I wanted to ask you, I, I know you see now this, this with the inner city schools. A lot of them have had these, uh, great community picnics and these ways to stay together. And I know you as being a alumni of Miami Central and being the president, um, can you speak to the importance of that, that community involvement? Um, because I know that for you, you, you have a special role in that and how people have been able to connect, but also to build community, um, through their, their high school alumni, especially here in Miami. That's a special role in our lives. So can you speak to that, um, as well? And, and also too, like how commissioners can support that movement that we see going on?
Great question. Great, great question. Listen, I grew up in a time where we had block parties without gunshots. I grew up in a time where you listen to the radio and they will tell you someone is having a party and you just go there without knowing the people, without incident. But what those things were in actuality were community builders. You know, they strengthened the community. They strengthened the community. People met that didn't know each other or haven't seen each other in a while. And basically he said, hey, listen, it's good to see you. It's good to be in your presence. It's good to know that you're still functioning. It's good to know you're still alive. So to me, those picnics are an extension of the block party. I was fortunate enough to go, uh, to, uh, the Northwestern picnic the other day. Liter- literally over five thousand people, maybe close to ten thousand people. Extraordinary event. I'm a central rock and I gave all praises to the Bulls on that particular day. You know why? Because it was family. And I used to coach at Northwestern from ninety to ninety-three before I opened the bookstore, before I purchased the bookstore. And so the love that was given to me, uh, when I went there was just extraordinary. And, uh, I think we need more of that. Examples of coming together without any weapons, without any untoward behavior, just pure love. Central had their picnic. I went to Miami Jackson's picnic. I went to Northwestern's picnic. Just beautiful affairs. And I wish we could internalize having more affairs like that. Uh, to show the love and appreciation we have for each other. But I also want to add a small caveat. When you got four, five people, four, five thousand people, and perhaps ten thousand people, let's create a situation where we give back to our schools and young kids too. Put two, three, four dollars into a general fund so we can give scholarships. Uh, use those gathering, gatherings for greater good. If you add that, I think it's a win-win for everybody. And so I, I will continue to, uh, encourage events like that. Make sure that we come together more than once a year. Uh, make sure we add that caveat to it where we giving scholarships or feeding the needy or what, whatever you desire. But a gathering that big should come away with helping out other folks who are unfortunate or unable, uh, to get there. So that's what I would add. But I will continue to support events like that. Much love to Northwestern, Central, Jackson, and all other schools who are adopting this new forum. Much love, much appreciation.
I love that. I love that. Uh, DC, before I let you go, in your own words, why should the voters in your district vote for you? Why do they deserve your vote?
I think the people should vote for me because I am the people. I'm a part of the people. I'm not some aristocrat in some suit looking down on the people and putting their priorities last before the big developers, before big business, before anyone. The people priorities are number one with me. It always has. It always will be. So when you're hurting, I'm hurting. When there's speeding in your community and you want to circle to slow down those cars, I'm that guy to get you what you need. If you're hungry, I'll give you that assistance. If it's flooding in your community, uh, that enables you to get to work on time, then I'm that guy that you can talk to. And speaking of talking to, one of the biggest complaints that you ever, that you hear every time with commissioners, once I vote for them, I never see them. You're going to get tired of seeing me. I'm gonna be at every homeowner, not every, but I'm gonna be at at least two, three homeowners meetings a year. Because I learned by listening to the people. You understand me? I admit that I don't know it all. I'm a quick learner now. I, you know, I learn. But you know what I learn most from? The people themselves. And you know who got some of the solutions to the problem? The people. They just don't have the avenues in, in which to get the tools to make it happen. I'll be your mouthpiece. I'll get you those tools. I'm a grunt. I'm not the major. I'm the grunt on the front line fighting that war with you. And so you want somebody to listen to you? You want somebody to be locked arm in arm with you? You want somebody who frankly, give a damn about you? I'm that guy. I'm that guy. I've always been that guy. And that's where I got my, my reputation from being that guy.
Well, I thank you for your service. And you know what? I want to break the news right now. That High Low News is officially endorsing William DC for County Commission, uh, District Two. Guys, we gotta go out and vote for Mr. Clark. He, that gaze of work in the community, going to work for all, everybody in the community. He has been here, he does the work, and he is putting the people first. You heard it here from his mouth, but he has the receipt. Guys, I just wanted to let you know that, that, that High Low News is behind you. We support you, we're endorsing you. We want to see you win. And I appreciate all the work and commitment that you've done, the mentorship that you have given me behind the scenes. And I just hope that you are the person that the people elect because you are the change that we need to see. So thank you. Thank you so much for taking time to speak with me. I know it, it means so much. I know you're in the busy part of the campaign, but to take time to speak with me means a lot. And I really, really appreciate it. Before I let you go, let the people know how they could follow you, where, how they could connect with you. But like I said, High Low News has endorsed a William DC Clark for County Commission.
Man, let me tell you something. And I, and I'm honestly telling you this. I've gotten endorsed by South Florida Firefighters Council, which includes every firefighter union in Miami-Dade County. I just recently been endorsed by the Miami Times. But nothing, absolutely nothing means more to me than your endorsement. You know why? Because you represent a group of people that has been underserved. Millennials in this town has been underserved. They are so frustrated that normally they don't go out and vote. And I understand why. Because time after time, your concerns are left on the back burner. No longer would those concerns be left on the back burner. And one of the first things I'm going to do is bring you guys in to assist me on running this district. That's one of the first things I'm going to do. And I think it will make the district a much better place to live in. I greatly appreciate you, uh, Ms. Tate. You just don't understand what that means to me. Truly, truly. I'm, I'm being totally honest with you. They can reach me at William DC Clark on Facebook or go to my website, Please, uh, young folks and older folks, uh, you got to get out and vote. If you want your voice to be heard, please vote for DC Clark. Punch one oh nine in the commission race, one oh nine. Ms. Tate, I gra- greatly appreciate being here with you. I can't wait to tell my folks of that endorsement. And I hope to see you at the polls. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Guys, election day is August twenty-third, Tuesday. Early voting is still going on today and, uh, Sunday. Guys, make sure you go to the polls. And if you're in District Two, go vote for William DC Clark. He is a, a excellent choice, you guys. High Low News has put in a full cosign behind that. Thank you again, Mr. Clark, DC, for, for taking time to speak with me. This has been a pleasure. I, I love. And you gotta come back to the show. You gotta come back to the show.
I will do, will do. Win, lose, or draw, I'll be back.
Yes, oh, win. We gonna talk.
I know, that's right. Thank you, Janette. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty.
Hey, what's up, High Low News family? This show is brought to you by Baptist Health's Pine App. Healthcare at your fingertips with the Pine App. Head to highlownewsmiami.com right now to learn more about their app and all the new features created to improve your healthcare experience with Baptist Health. Thank you for tuning in.